Good morning, everyone. Today is March 2nd, 2023. We are at our work session and special meeting at the 1770 House located on Main Street in East Hampton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I could just ask everybody to stand just for a minute. A very prominent resident of our village passed away the other day, and he's also a very personal friend of mine, and he's also a very good friend to East Hampton Village. His name was Thomas Lee, and over the course of his time here in East Hampton Village, he has donated to our scholarship. He actually created the scholarship fund for employees' children. And he also donated motorcycles to the police department when I was chief, and then he donated them again. And he's just a really terrific person that we're gonna miss. He was a very good friend of the village, and I just can't say enough nice things about him, and I wish his family the best. It was a very unexpected death, so we're gonna miss him, and the best to his family. Thank you all. Today, we're at the 1770 House, which is part of our work session winter series, I guess if you want to call it, where we've been visiting different historic locations throughout the village. And we have our village historian give us the history of the building, and then we ask the current owners or operators to give us what is currently going on in that location. So today, we're at the 1770 House on Main Street in East Hampton, and we'd like Hugh King, our historian, to give us the history of the building.
Well, the building, the room that we're in now, we think, was a store at one time. It was added on here by Jonathan Dayton in like 1795. And why would you have a store added onto this building? We think it's because Clinton Academy was right down the street. And Clinton Academy had students from all over the United States, the eastern part of the United States, even as far as the West Indies, going to school there. And they would board in houses up and down the street. And so we think that this was added on to this building to be a store to accommodate those students. Also, the Beehive Oven that's in the basement, we think that dates back to the 1770s. And Bob Hefner thinks that this house was done in the late 18th century. So there's where we think we get the 1770 House from. But to know more about the Beehive Oven, oh, I'll tell you that later. A man named Charles Boulevard Dayton lived here. He was a surgeon during the Civil War, and he marched through Georgia, to Georgia, with General William Tecumseh Sherman during the Civil War. He actually was on that march through the South. And unfortunately, like so many other doctors who served in the Civil War, remember, the way to save someone's life was probably to cut off a limb during the war. So what they had seen during the war affected many of them after they came back. And Mr. Dayton, we think, was, we're pretty sure was afflicted because he got addicted to alcohol, and he died rather young. Also, a man named Egbert Lawrence Dayton lived here. His stone is in the cemetery, and it said he died in Acapulco, or he was buried there. And he went to California. Why did he go to California? It's 1848. The gold rush, right, and that's where we think that that's the reason he was on that boat going to California. Also, a living here was Edward Morford. Edward Morford was the first police chief, but we still can't find a picture of, right? And his wife opened up a boarding house here, and this is the early 1900s. We don't think this was a boarding house until the 20th century. And then John Williams ran this place, Don Hunting ran this place, and then Min and Sid Pearl ran the place, right? And then now it's been an inn, at least on a regular basis, since the 40s, all right? Now, if you want to know about the Beehive Oven and all about it, Mike Tracy was here in 1770. He was elected constable, and then he was elected fence viewer. So we're pretty sure that he was here inspecting that Beehive Oven. So after I'm done later, he'll probably be able to give you a report on it. That's all I got.
That's great. So next up is the current manager, Michael Cohen, who could give us a little history of what's going on right now.
Absolutely. First, thank you, Mayor Larson and trustees, for being here this morning. It's a pleasure to have you all here. And Mr. King, thank you for the history. As long as I've been here, which is about 16 years, this story always seems to change just a little bit, but also getting more information and more history, so thank you. So currently, we are still operating as a hotel and a restaurant. We have six gorgeous guest rooms here in the main house and two bedroom cottage in the back. The restaurant is, you know, one of the likely ones to be open nightly all year round. And we do now have three dining rooms to choose from. So right now, we're in our main dining room, which is our, you know, beautiful, you know, with the windows and the open air and the natural light coming in. We consider it the more formal setting with a cozy fireplace. Downstairs, we have our tavern, which I think some of you may have experienced before, which is, you know, the winter sort of cozy destination. And then, of course, now we have our beautiful garden in the back with the great myrtle trees and the fountain, which is actually pretty special. So still operating as a hotel and a restaurant. Twenty now, one years in under current ownership, which is a pretty good run. So, yeah, we're happy to have you all here and...
I have two more things, but you don't, sorry.
No, I am pleased.
First of all, the paneling, when you walk in, you go into the receiving area and you look at the paneling. That's called tombstone paneling. That's very elegant. The only other building we know that has this paneling, Home Sweet Home. If you go into Home Sweet Home, you see that, and we think the paneling in Home Sweet Home was put in about 1750 by Elijah Jones. So it kind of goes along with 1770 here. And the other thing is, if you go down to the bar, years ago, when you went to the play at Guild Hall, you would come over here after the play and go down there, and all along behind the benches, along the wall, were pictures of all the people who appeared in the theater over there. This is like in the 1950s and 60s, from anybody else was born. Okay, thank you.
Well, Hugh, I have a question. Downstairs, was it ever, what's the history of the bar downstairs?
I don't know. Want me to make up something?
Could you?
No, I don't know what the history, and then we were just shown a picture. There was a bar when you walked in on the right there, right?
Yeah, in the parlor, in the reception, next to the office.
Wow.
Yeah, that's gone, that's gone. But I don't know what the history of what downstairs is at all.
We were told that it was a speakeasy during its prohibition.
Well, I don't know, Edward Morford was here.
It definitely sounds appropriate.
Yeah, but one of the people who owned it was the police chief.
Well, wouldn't that add a little drama, right?
That's it. I don't have any more. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much, everybody. That was great. So now we'll do the roll call.
Okay. Mayor Jerry Larson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Chris Menardi.
Here.
Trustee Carrie Doyle.
Here.
Trustee Sarah Amadon.
Here.
Trustee Sandra Melendez.
Here.
Administrator Marcos Baladron.
Here.
Village Attorney Lisa Perillo has an excused absence.
Great. Next up is mayor's announcements. The only announcement I have today is about the Mystery Crime Festival, which I'm gonna ask Carrie to speak about.
Yes, so tickets finally went on sale yesterday, March 1st, for the Hamptons Who Done It. We're getting a great response. Tickets are limited, so I do want to advise people to go on Eventbrite, or there's a link through our website, hamptonswhodoneit.com, to get your tickets. I'm getting calls literally from people from Canada saying they're coming, so we have limited space. And I want to make sure, everybody, it is for our community, so please get your tickets. They're reasonably priced, and some of the panels are free. We have some great programming, and we're also still looking. If you're interested in volunteering, or sponsoring, or working with us, please email me. We'd be happy to have you on board, and hopefully we'll see you there.
Great. Thank you. And I know that, again, Carrie has been working on this tirelessly with her committee, and it's a lot of work, so...
Yes.
It's going to be a really fun event, though. There's so many great authors coming.
Yeah, we have so many bestselling authors, and then the mayor's doing a bus tour to the local crime scenes, and we're having a, Forensics World is doing Who Killed the Mayor? And Hugh King is doing his graveyard tours. So there's a lot of interactive opportunity. It's panels, true crime panels, and fiction panels, and lots of bestselling authors, and a cocktail party, and so, something for everybody.
Should be a lot of fun, and the prices are really reasonable, which...
Yeah.
Should make it even more attractive, so that'd be fun.
Yeah.
All right, next up, we already lost them, so we'll go, we'll skip the chief, and we'll go...
He's right there, he's right there.
Where is he?
Chief, Chief Tracy.
Chief, could you talk to us about the, briefly, about the Main Beach parking lot?
I sure will, Mr. Mayor.
If you could sit over there next to Hugh.
Right here.
That's the one with the extra...
Panic?
Yes. He's got that electric lift. Thank you. So what I'm here to discuss is the realignment of the handicap parking spaces up ahead of the Main Beach. Long time coming, really. We've got a very nice ramp that we put down each summer, just to the west of the 15-minute parking zone. I remember we had pictures taken about three or four years ago when that got installed. The only thing missing was the handicap parking spots in close proximity to the ramp. So we've rectified that by having the engineer draw us a proposal, which puts several spots on the western end of the 15-minute zone, and some nice striping, which indicates a transitway, a walkway, to the ramp for the handicap drivers. The other thing we did is we had several spots that were on the hill, at the top of Ocean Avenue, handicap spots where, in a place where they don't belong, you know, put handicap spots on a hill. So we moved those spots to the bottom of the hill, right next to the crosswalk, so that handicapped drivers will be able to get out of their car there, right into a crosswalk to the back of the building, making everything as it should be, very, very easy to do. I've spoken to the highway superintendent about it, and it's just a matter of paint and moving some signs. So we don't require any legislation, we're not changing any laws. So it should be something that we could do as soon as the board says go and the superintendent is ready to do the work. And that's it. That was perfect. Thank you.
Okay. What about the oven?
Good seeing you again. I think this seems pretty, pretty simple. Is everybody in agreement? We're not losing any parking, right, so? All right? Everybody good?
Yes.
All right. Next up is our highway superintendent to talk about some new sidewalks. Dave, you're up. Could you take the chair, please?
Sure.
Remember you're under oath?
Yes, of course. Your turn. Good morning, everybody. So after many requests throughout the years, we're looking at installing a new sidewalk in the area of the Sheepfold on Panago, and it would basically run between CBS and Egypt Lane. There's photos in your package of the area. You can see that it's a well-beaten path there. A lot of people already use it. It connects with the crosswalk at Acabonic in Egypt, or Acabonic in Panago, and leads directly to the post office, crosswalk, and services CBS and the post office. At this point, we're, we have to get an engineering drawing sent to the state, because it is state right-of-way. We just can't install it like we would on a regular Village right-of-way. We have to have a work permit from the state, and their blessing. So we have the Rayner Group, right now, has completed site work on the plan, and you should have a drawing available to, a supplementary drawing available mid-March that we can submit to the DOT for comment. And from there, they'll kick it back and tell us what exactly they want, and we'll go through the permit fee with DOT to get the permit. And you will have before the board a new sidewalk contractor contract to be approved next BOT meeting. And so we'll have our contractor in place, and hopefully DOT will be speedy in issuing a permit, and we can get this project completed.
That's good. I have a question. The photograph that we have basically shows the view of the eastbound traffic lane or shoulder, and the fence and the tree line. So the sidewalk would go between the fence and the tree line?
Correct.
Will it go the whole length?
Yes.
To the intersection?
It'll connect the two. I think in the photographs, I tried to add the two pads for the existing crosswalks.
Yeah, we only have the one photo.
Oh, you only have one?
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just, I mean, that's what I'm assuming. I just wanted to clarify.
The state, when the state put in the pedestrian cross signals at Panago and Egypt, and Panago and Acabonic, they installed handicap access pads.
Traffic control.
Right, and traffic control and the push buttons and everything, and they just dead-end right there on the green. So we will connect the sidewalk from that wheelchair access to the one that's already existing at the post office.
The other thing that added to this problem, not only the crosswalks, and then having nowhere to walk once you cross, but also that eastbound shoulder, for when I was chief, that was all no parking up there. And we changed that to allow parking, because there was so much overflow from gay lane, that then people had no place to walk, so I think this is a good change. Will it be cement like the one in the picture, or is it gonna be brick?
No, we'll do cement.
Cement, okay.
Yeah, the state will probably require it to be...
Well, it should, I mean, we already have cement on one side, so I think it would make sense to keep it uniform. I just, you know, the brick would look much nicer, but...
Agreed.
We either rip out the one we have and put in brick, or we go with cement.
I have a feeling the state will require concrete.
Why is that?
Design criteria.
Less tripping hazard, maybe?
Structurally.
All right, is everybody okay with this?
Yes.
Yes. All right, great.
ADA, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we're gonna ask the village administrator to talk about this. This is the Seaspray Cottages RFI. And if you could explain the difference between RFP and a RFI, so everybody knows what we're talking about, that'd be great.
Yeah, I will touch on it briefly. The village attorney was supposed to kind of give a little bit of a presentation, but the difference is between the request for information versus a request for proposal. Whereas the request for proposal is a lot more detailed. You know, the board knows what it's looking for. A sidewalk is a perfect example of what RFP, you know, what you're putting out in a sense for that specific project. A request for information is rather vague, and what we're looking for is just information. We're looking for individuals to submit, or companies, organizations, to submit their ideas for the management of the Seaspray properties, the cottages, 13 of them. So it's really just to see what's out there. We've got several submissions that we received over the last two and a half years. We've got many ideas from the current tenants at Seaspray, being one of them, and then all the way down to a company from West Palm Beach that reached out to us, because they'd love to kind of take the management over of that. I think the board's held in the view that the village shouldn't be in the landlord business, and I think most agree, and I think there's others that can do it better, and that can provide better value to the village.
Can you also just let, if people don't know, just sort of about the Seaspray cottages and what they are and how it works?
Sure. Well, it's 13 cottages, and I don't know the year of Seaspray.
Well, it burnt down in 78, but...
Right.
Yeah.
But there are 13 cottages that the village makes about, over 1.2 million each year in revenue. But a lot of the tenants have been there year over year over year. It's supposed to be what's, you know, like an auction in a sense, not, what am I looking for? What's the word I'm looking for?
Lottery.
Lottery, in a sense, that we do per cottage when they come available. The village, over the last two and a half years, we've been, there's been a lot of next-year auctions that we've been allowing the tenants to have, that we've been slowly kind of winding down on, so that we could get to this point to see, you know, if there's a better opportunity out there. If not, then so be it. They can certainly have their next year's extension, but it's for the board to decide if there's a better avenue to go down.
Right, and it's on 16 acres, correct?
I think it's 18, yeah, it's just under 20.
And you said at one point that the village handyman devotes a large percentage of the work, of his whole work.
A large percentage, yes. So much so that we actually, I think, one of the salaries we actually allocated per the Seaspray cottages is under the village budget.
Right, and then they're operable from June to...
I believe they check in May 15th, that first weekend, they're allowed to kind of go in and clean up a little bit, but May 15th to September 15th, and usually the village in the past gives them an extension for a month, 30 days, October 15th, and then it's a hard out, the electricity's turned off, you know, so we can save a little bit. But there's wear and tear. There's a lot of structural damage that's been done. We're about to go in again pretty soon. I think some of the roofs are in terrible condition. Correct, we're looking at roofs. The buildings weren't really designed to be long-term, long-term housing, like we're using them for. And there's been very little maintenance over the course of, you know, since the village is... They were rebuilt, they were rebuilt when the village first started to rent them. They were all rebuilt, and since then, very little real maintenance has been done to them. And they're just on posts, on the ground, salt atmosphere, you know, there's a lot of rot, and there's issues with each structure. So, you know, we need to take a hard look at how we're going to address this going forward.
Right, and a lot of them are primarily used as cabanas for people.
Correct.
They don't even live there.
Fifty percent of them are actually village residents.
Right, so just so, since this is such a hot topic, I know it will be, just to make sure that people know, we're not looking to, you know, build some giant things there, it's just...
We're looking for information. That's it, many ideas, other proposals. And then what we could do, what we'll be discussing with the mayor, is that maybe some of the best proposals could go right to a public hearing, so the public could learn about kind of what we're hearing, and then the board can have a discussion as to what it wants to do. But it's just looking for information, because there's a lot of information that we're getting privately that the public should hear about. It's their, it's public property, it's public land, so... Yeah, they're in bad shape, and some of you might know this, but if you do a substantial renovation, you have to comply with FEMA, and that means lifting them and pile driving, and it's a lot. So there's a kind of a line that we've been trying not to cross with the Seaspray cottages. I mean, there's no basements, the electric is run like through the bottom of the floor, I guess, the plumbing. It's really, it's...
They're not insulated.
They're bad, they're bad. I'm shocked that they're still there. Even one big storm, it doesn't even have to be a hurricane, nor'easter would hurt these, and so anyway...
I'm sure if the people looking at the, to supply the RFI are really gonna jump on this now.
They know. They're motivated. They really are. There's a lot of people that would love to attach their name to the new Seaspray cottages. So I think the board will be very happy.
No, I think it's great. We get the information, and we see if we like it.
That's all it is.
All right. Anything else? That's good. All right, so the next thing on the list is the emergency service code changes. So as everybody knows, and everybody should know, that the village attorney has been going through our village code, and it's kind of doing a maintenance on it and seeing where we're lacking. And he discovered, or she discovered, that we don't have any code that basically creates our police department, our fire department, or our ambulance service. So these three legislations that I'm going to talk about will be put into our village code, and will basically outline that the village has a police department, that we have a fire department, and that we have an ambulance service. What's really interesting during the research is that state law really outlines step by step about a police department, and it outlines step by step about a fire department, right down to when the fire department has to have its annual meetings, who's in charge of the fire department, and all of that. But what we noticed with ambulance, there is no such law at all. So this law that we're going to introduce will not only put it in the code, but it'll set the same parameters that are set in the police department code and the fire department code, and it'll lay out who's in charge of the ambulance, how it all works. And I think it'll be, it'll be a lot better moving forward when we restructure this the way it should be done. So that's what this is all about. So what, I have the sample legislations here that the attorney has written up. What I want to do is, when we're done with the work session, is close the work session, move into a special meeting, and then just pass three resolutions that will allow these to be put on the next agenda for a public hearing. So does anybody have any questions about any of this?
No.
No? Okay. And then everybody will have time to look at the laws, and we can revise, we can make changes, and whatever we want to do for the public hearing. So if, are we done with the work session?
Yeah, we should have public comment, just in case.
Well, not in the work session. So can I get a motion to close the work session?
Second.
All in favor? All right, so the work session's closed. Now we're gonna open our special meeting. And I'm gonna put on the agenda the first law be a law about putting the police department into the village code. And I just want to get a motion to put that on the scheduled public hearing for March 17th.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, that's done. We're gonna do the same thing for the fire department?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then the third one is for the village ambulance?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so those have all now been scheduled for public hearings on March 17th at 11:00 a.m. All right, so now, is there any public comment? Because since we opened the meeting, we have to allow for public comment. So is there anybody who would like to address, anybody in the audience who would like to address the board? No? Okay. Anybody on the board who'd like to say anything?
Do you want to say anything?
Sarah, is there anything you'd like to say, Sarah?
I just wanted to open up the conversation about the change of the beach tickets, or the beach permitting.
So with the last, Sarah wasn't here at the last board meeting, where we talked about changing the monthly passes to half-seasons and raising the price. So that's what, so the floor is yours.
Okay, so my question is, would it include, could, if you lived in the town, could you park after the...
September 15th.
September 15th to October 15th, or is it only for Village?
Well, yeah, we brought this up at the last, so the permits would, no, no, no. The permits would go to September 15th, correct? But we're keeping the beaches open until Columbus Day.
Right.
So there would be no parking regulations after September 15th. Because Carrie brought up a good point, too, like the dog regulations are lifted September 15th, or September 30th.
We said weekends.
I thought you said weekends.
We said weekends.
Oh, weekends, we were, so then we would have to, we would have to have the permits go until Columbus Day. I think that's what we said.
Yeah, Columbus Day.
Columbus Day.
The ninth is...
And, sorry, I'm not prepared, but Columbus Day, but only on the weekends. So you would need a parking pass until...
So if you're a town resident.
But had, did you buy one? Give me...
So if you're a town resident...
Did the town resident buy a permit?
No, no.
If you're a town resident, you will not be able to park at the beach on weekends between September 15th and Columbus Day. You will need a parking pass.
Until after 5 o'clock.
Yeah, until after, you know, before, after, just like the regular way it is. During the week, no.
Because we have lifeguards on duty on the weekends, so we would regulate the parking.
So I just want to say, I've been getting a lot of feedback about this, about this decision, and, you know, and also that I have to apologize, the only thing I spoke out against was that... that the only thing I spoke out against was that it would be hard for the contractors to park there. It was a little myopic. I do feel there is a sense, after September fifteenth, after Labor Day, that the locals feel like they are reclaiming the beach. And I think to take away one more thing and not let them park there for that month is just, you know, it's sort of making money off, off the backs of the locals. And I, I don't, I, I like the idea of having lifeguards there, but there, I mean, I, you know, Tumble Week Tuesday, I read the collective side release, there's like, everybody's gone. So, I, I just have a problem with trying to get more money for people to pay to use the beach then.
So, I mean, I think it's pretty simple. If we just made the permits till September fifteenth, still kept the beaches open with lifeguards until Columbus Day and just let people park. I don't think we have such a, a demand after September fifteenth that it's going to overflow the parking lots.
No.
So, I don't think it would matter. We're still providing a good service.
So, we could still provide the lifeguards.
Yeah.
And not change the parking.
Exactly. And just still end the beach permit requirement September fifteenth. Keep the beaches open on the weekends until October and don't have any parking regulations.
Yeah, and...
Because it's not that busy.
I can't imagine it.
No.
Chief Smith, I mean, he's up there anyway, you know, we have a small crew that's up there.
Right.
So, this isn't an extra lift.
Is that right, Chris?
Fine. I just tried to, I, I thought the overall spirit was to space out the timing of the monthly passes.
Yeah, I just think, I think because we're under the, the laws are really through the town trustees because it's their beach. And they're not willing to change those laws, which I respect. So, I think we're putting more of a burden on people because even though they can bring their dogs to the beach or they can drive on the beach, you know, we're going to have regulations in place that are going to make it more difficult. So, I think, I think this is a good way, we could try it this year and see how it goes.
Okay.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's really going to be a problem. I mean, the driving on the beach may be a little problem because if you, you have people coming, say, from, you know, driving on the beach and people who are sitting on the beach are not going to really be aware and you have the lifeguard, so you kind of get the feel of it's summer, but now you have vehicles driving. I don't know if that's going to be a real issue, but we'll have to look at it. I mean, we didn't really have an issue. We had the same problem this summer and the past summer.
It wasn't a problem last year, it was just, there was isolated incidences, but...
Yeah, I mean, just so everybody knows, we've kept the beaches open until Columbus Day. So, we were just trying to make it, you know, more uniform, I guess, is what we were trying to do, so...
Yeah, there's more people up there anyway, so we've been opening it up.
Yeah, it's all right. So, everybody all right with that?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. You good? All right, so, anything else before we close? No? All right, so we're going to, I do have to recommend dinner here. Whether you eat in the pub downstairs, which is really a lot of fun, or you eat here in the formal dining room, it's great.[1764.04]